For the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to thank everybody for their attendance this evening. First order of business, I'd like to take a roll call if I could. Trustee Berenger?
Berenger is present.
Trustee Farrar?
Farrar is here.
Trustee Carl?
Present.
Trustee O'Connor?
O'Connor is here.
Mayor Dwyer here, thank you so much. Okay. First order of business is I need a motion to open the public hearing on property acquisition, the eminent domain procedure law S. 202-47 Lakes Road, tax map 211-1-1, known as Roscoe Smith Estate. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Berenger will make the motion.
Farrar, a second. Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So Carrie, thank you. Okay. Counsel, are we going to go right into... Anything on your end, or are we just going to just open the public hearing?
No, I'm good. I'm gonna call the hearing to order and make a presentation and then allow the public to comment.
Very good.
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Kathleen Bennett. I'm an attorney with Bonnechannick and King, special counsel to the Village of Monroe. My partner, Brody Smith, is also here with me this evening, and I'm calling this public hearing to order. We are here today to hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 201 of the eminent domain procedure law, or EDPL, to consider the condemnation of certain property by the Village of Monroe, which I will refer to as the Village. The way I intend to conduct the hearing is to describe the property to be acquired, the public use, benefit, or purpose to be served by the acquisition, and the general effect of the project on the environment and the remaining steps in the condemnation process. After I finish my presentation, any individuals wishing to comment may do so. We would like those individuals wishing to speak to register. They will be called to speak in the order that they registered. We would request that all speakers state their name and address for the record. Speakers will be given three minutes to comment. Written comments will also be accepted by the Village until September 5th, 2023, and responses to comments will be provided in the findings document that ultimately will be issued by the Village Board. Additional information about the potential acquisition will be able to be found on the Village's website and in the Village Clerk's office. It will likely take a few days to upload the records from this hearing to the website and to get them to the Village Clerk so that they are available for everyone. Copies of the records from this hearing will also be made available for public inspection in the offices of the Village Clerk and the County Clerk, free of cost. The Village pursuant to Sections 201 and 204 of the EDPL proposes to acquire fee title to the property owned by W.C. Lincoln, Inc., in the Village of Monroe, Orange County, New York, at 47 Lakes Road, and identified as tax map parcel number 211-1-1. The property to be acquired is also depicted on the maps here, which are included as Exhibit A of the hearing record, and there are also poster boards of the properties around the Village Hall tonight. The property description report and the EAF mapper summary report is included in this hearing record as Exhibit B. The deed transferring the property to W.C. Lincoln, Incorporated, is included in the hearing record as Exhibit C. The Department of State entity information on W.C. Lincoln, Inc., is included in the hearing record as Exhibit D. I would also like to include, as part of the hearing record, the legal notice of the hearing published in the Times-Herald Record, a daily newspaper, from July 31st, 2023 through August 4th, 2023, August 6th through August 11th, 2023, and August 13th through August 15th, 2023, as Exhibit E. The newspaper does not publish on Saturdays. On July 20th, 2023, notice was also mailed via certified mail, return receipt requested to W.C. Lincoln, Inc., to Yehuda Frank, to Simon Jacobs, and to Joseph Haspel. The notice was resent to Joseph Haspel at his new address on July 31st, 2023. Copies of the certified receipts are included as Exhibit F to the hearing record. Notice of the hearing was also attempted to be served on the Secretary of State, but the Secretary of State declined service. A copy of the affidavit of attempted service is included as Exhibit G. The EAF mapper summary report was sent to W.C. Lincoln, to Yehuda Frank, to Simon Jacobs, and to Joseph Haspel via certified mail on August 4th, 2023, and a copy of the certified mail receipts is included in the hearing record as Exhibit H. And again, the owner, tax map number, and address of the property is as follows: reputed owner, W.C. Lincoln, Inc., tax map number 211-1-1, parcel address 47 Lakes Road. By way of background, the property is the former homestead of Roscoe Smith, founder of Orange and Rockland Utilities, and widely recognized as the man who brought electric light to the Hudson Valley. In 1905, he convinced investors to buy stock in his planned electric company, resulting in the incorporation of the Orange Utilities Company by the end of the year. Over the course of his career, Smith's company acquired and merged with many power companies, eventually becoming Orange and Rockland Utilities, Inc. Smith's passion extended beyond entrepreneurship, as he was a philanthropic antiquarian, having donated land for the museum Village of Smith's Clove, in which he displayed his collection of 20 buildings dating from the 18th and early 19th centuries. Smith's passion for collecting is also visible at the Roscoe Smith House, which was reportedly built around 1906, and displays artifacts within the landscape, including water wheels, windmills, and grist mill stones. After Smith's death in 1976, the property remained in his family until it was sold 20 years later. Contributing features to the property include the main house with matching garage, the stone dam and subsequent pond, stone pillars with entry gate, two pedestrian footbridges, two water wheels, and two additional outbuildings of unknown purpose, which are in a significantly deteriorated state, and may have been moved to the property as part of Smith's hobby of acquiring historic structures. According to a determination made by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, or SHPO, S-H-P-O, on May 3rd, 2021, the Roscoe Smith House appears eligible for the state and national registers under criterion B as the home of Roscoe Smith. A copy of that determination is included in the hearing record as Exhibit I. And then photos of the property are included in the hearing record as Exhibit J. The Village previously attempted to acquire the property in 2001 and 2003. However, the property owner successfully challenged those attempts because the Village did not properly publish notice in 2001 and failed to comply with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEQA, S-E-Q-R-A, in 2003. Documents related to the 2001 and 2003 eminent domain proceedings are included in the hearing record as Exhibit K. Also in or about 2001, the owner of the property applied for a building permit to construct a single-family home on the property pursuant to a 1909 subdivision map that had been filed with the county. That request led to litigation over whether the owner had acquired vested rights in the 1909 subdivision approval. The court concluded that the property owner did not have vested rights to subdivide the property in accordance with the 1909 subdivision map, and that the approval and the map were deemed abandoned. Copies of documents related to the validity of the 1909 subdivision map are included in the hearing record as Exhibit L. In the course of the Village's efforts to acquire portions of the Smith property through eminent domain proceedings, the owner and the Village came to an understanding whereby the owner would dedicate a portion of its land to the Village, and in return, the Village Planning Board would review a subdivision plat submitted by the owner. In January of 2007, the owner submitted an application to the Planning Board for approval of a so-called revised final subdivision. After requiring various modifications to the plat, in September 2008, the Planning Board adopted a negative declaration under SEQA and a resolution granting preliminary subdivision approval. The lots depicted on the owner's subdivision plat did not meet the bulk requirements of the Village's zoning code, but no variance had been issued. In addition, traffic was identified as a potential impact, but no traffic study was completed prior to the issuance of the negative declaration. As a result, further litigation by adjoining property owners ensued. Copies of meeting minutes and other documents relevant to the 2007-2008 review and subsequent litigation are included as part of the hearing record as Exhibit M. As a result of the litigation filed by the adjoining property owners, a settlement agreement was reached in 2009 that required modifications to the subdivision plat. In 2010, the owner again appeared before the Planning Board for final subdivision approval based on modifications that had been made as part of that settlement agreement. No final approval was issued, and the terms of that agreement were not finalized. A copy of the relevant meeting minute excerpts is included as part of the hearing record as Exhibit N. Due to various issues, the owner did not appear before the Planning Board again until November of 2013, over two and a half years from the previous appearance. The owner noted that there were continuing issues with the DEC, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Village Board, which indicated at that time that it no longer wanted to acquire the Roscoe Smith Home and corresponding improvements. As a result of the delay, it was determined that the 2008 approval had lapsed, and a new subdivision application and review process would be required. A copy of the excerpts from relevant meeting minutes and documents are included as Exhibit N. The owner reapplied to the Planning Board in November of 2014, but the Planning Board review process did not commence until 2016 because the owner had been working with the Army Corps of Engineers to rectify some issues that the Army Corps had with the project. At that time, there was also renewed interest from the Village in acquiring the Roscoe Smith Home and corresponding artifacts on the property. Again, a copy of excerpts from the relevant meeting minutes are included as Exhibit N. It does not appear from the Village Planning Board minutes that a preliminary approval was ever granted for the 2014 application. Instead, the owner made sporadic appearances before the Planning Board and Village Board between 2016 and 2018 to discuss responses to comments, modifications to the plan, and the Village's intentions with respect to the Roscoe Smith Home and associated structures. The owner has not appeared before the Planning Board with respect to the subdivision application since 2018. Again, excerpts from relevant meeting minutes are included as Exhibit N. On April 14th, 2022, the owner applied for a building permit to build a one-family residence within the same property as in 2003 on what owner described as Lot 58. The inspector denied the application on May 22nd, 2022. The owner thereafter appealed to the ZBA on June 14th, 2022, to reverse the inspector's denial of a permit. As in 2003, the owner again declined to seek a variance. The ZBA affirmed the inspector's denial in its decision. The owner filed another lawsuit, in which it again asserted that it had vested rights to develop the property pursuant to a 1909 subdivision map. However, that claim was dismissed by Supreme Court, Orange County, on August 14th, 2023. Documents relating to the 2022 proceeding are included as part of the hearing record as Exhibit O. In 2022, the Village assembled a committee to work on a new comprehensive plan for the Village. One of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to protect cultural resources in the Village, including those that are not protected by the State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. A copy of the draft comprehensive plan is attached, or included, as part of the hearing record as Exhibit P. In connection with the comprehensive planning process, the Village Board adopted two relevant moratoria: a moratorium on land use, development processing and approvals, and a temporary suspension of demolition or modification permits for structures located in the historic district, or listed or identified as eligible for listing, on the New York State CRIS website, maintained by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. The land use development moratorium has been extended through September 20th, 2023, and the demolition moratorium expires on September 7th, 2023. A copy of the moratoria laws is included as part of the hearing record as Exhibit Q. At the time the demolition moratorium was enacted, the property was included on the CRIS website as eligible for listing, and the property was covered by the moratorium. On or about May 12th, 2023, the owner's representative requested that the Village engineer inspect the property for the purpose of determining whether the moratorium's exception for unsafe structures would apply to permit demolition of the main home structure on the property. A copy of the email is included as part of the hearing record as Exhibit R. Once the Village contracted with an engineering firm for the inspection of the property, the owner changed its position and indicated that it would not permit the Village's engineer or anyone else from the Village on the property for purposes of conducting an inspection. Instead, it appears that the owner reached out to SHPO to have the property removed from the CRIS website, as the Village was informed last month that SHPO would be removing the property from the CRIS database based on a letter written by the owner's engineer. A copy of the letter is attached, or included, as part of the hearing record as Exhibit S. Owner submitted an application for a demolition permit to demolish the main home structure on the property. A copy of the demolition application is included as Exhibit T. Since the Village's engineer has never had an opportunity to inspect the main home structure on the property, the Village Code Enforcement Officer was instructed to deny the demolition permit. A copy is included as Exhibit U. The Village also passed a resolution to take all appropriate actions under the eminent domain procedure law to acquire the property. A copy of that resolution is included as Exhibit V. The Village then sought and obtained a temporary restraining order preventing the removal of the Roscoe Smith Home and associated structures during the pendency of the EDPL process. A copy of the TRO is included as Exhibit W. The Village is now seeking to exercise its power of eminent domain to acquire fee title to the entire property for use as a park and/or preservation of a historic site. Acquisition of the property is within the Village's statutory authority and will serve the public use, benefit, or purpose by preserving a historic as to the importance of Roscoe Smith and/or the creation of a beautiful park or landscaped area or a visitor's site. The Village will also consider the impacts of the condemnation on the environment. A full environmental assessment form has been prepared for the Village's consideration in connection with assessing environmental impacts associated with the potential acquisition. No final decision on the condemnation will be made until the Village, as the sole involved agency, has satisfied the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, as well as the eminent domain procedure law, with respect to evaluating potential environmental impacts. A copy of the EAF is included as part of the hearing record as Exhibit F, and documents related to wetlands are included as Exhibit Y. Since the proposed acquisition would prevent development of the property and could result in the retention of and continued upkeep and maintenance of historic structures on the property and/or the creation of a public park, it is anticipated that the environment would benefit as a result of the acquisition. The Village has considered alternative methods for preserving the historical property to honor Roscoe Smith, including prior eminent domain understandings with owner voluntary acquisition. As such, the Village has complied with EDPL to consider alternatives. There are no alternative sites that would serve the purpose of the Village to preserve the Roscoe Smith Home site. Before moving on to the public comment portion, I just want to briefly outline the next steps under the EDPL. The Village will keep the public hearing open and continue to accept written comments until the next Village Board meeting, which is September 5th, 2023. The Village will consider public comments, complete the SEQA process, and then issue a determination and findings within 90 days of when it closes the public hearing. A formal EDPL purchase offer will be made based on an appraisal of the fair market value of the property should the Village Board decide to move forward with the condemnation. And again, should the Village Board decide to move forward with the condemnation, it would then file notices of pendency and a petition for permission to file an acquisition map with the Orange County Supreme Court, and title to the property would transfer to the Village upon filing an acquisition map with the County Clerk. Again, additional information with respect to the property and the Village's pursuit of potential eminent domain can be, or will be able to be, found on the Village's website and in the Village's Clerk's office. I would open this up to public comments at this time. I would, before we start with the people in the audience, I would just like to note for the record that the Village Board did receive written comments from the following individuals this afternoon: Goldie Brock, Shia Ilawitz, Sarah Kupcik, Abraham Kohn, Shalem Dove Kapuzic, Chaskil and Rachel Strolovich, Jacob Weberman, and Moshe Brock. And all of those comments will be included as part of the hearing record and responded to as part of a determination and findings adopted by the Village Board.
Attorney Bennett? I would just note that you indicated that the public hearing would be left open through September 5th, which is the next Board meeting, but then you also noted on a slide that the Board would, the previous slide, September 30th?
I, that was a mistake. I wasn't sure when the next Village Board meeting was. So it will be, I will make that change in the presentation that's filed with the Clerk's office. It is September 5th, the next Village Board meeting. Thank you for that correction. Matt Laponis?
I didn't want to say anything about this.
Okay. Maverine Richardson? And again, anybody who wishes to speak, if you could just state your full name and your address for purposes of the record, thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Richardson. I live in the town of Monroe. I am Dinosaur Park Girl, and when I started the Dinosaur Park petition to preserve the wetlands surrounding Monbassia Lake and fought against the project for the health of our drinking water source, I always knew that I couldn't stop there. After receiving so much positive response from the community, it would be a shame to let that momentum die out. And when I ruled the Dinosaur Park petition into Preserve Monroe, the community action group that I have on Facebook and have brought down to Town Hall in the faces of the town board time after time, bringing the same concerns about town-owned land not remaining preserved, Preserve Monroe grew to be a full-blown community action group that I always knew I would wind up, in some way, fighting for Roscoe Smith. It wasn't a goal, it was the dream, that if we reached enough people who cared about the community the way that I did, the way that I know so many people care about this community in Preserve Monroe, that we would take action together to make this right. To have passed this property, which by all rights should be listed as a historical property, for years, watching it fall apart piece by piece with each passing day, has been a gut-wrenching and pitiful metaphor for Monroe in recent years. To feel hopeless as parts are removed from us, to stand by and watch and wait for another piece as it's taken, and hold our breaths for when the bulldozers come. In New York State, there's no way for the public to control whether this site is deemed historical from a position of non-ownership. I know because I've personally pursued SHPO and Chris. When I first made logos for Preserve Monroe, I visited the street outside of Roscoe Smith, like so many others, and snapped photos of the water wheel in the hopes that one day I would need them. When I walked petitions for the Preserve Monroe line to run for Town Board, I rendered a black and white image of the water wheel, and I collected around 700 signatures all over the community, from all different creeds, colors, from all different ideology, under its emblem. When I designed my first palm card, I used the Roscoe Smith Water Wheel again to represent our cause. Roscoe Smith and his legacy represents this community. It laces it. The Mill Ponds is named after Smith's mill. Smith's Cove Park owes its name to him. Museum Village is not the only tourist attraction or site of potential historical preservation, tourism, and importance. To leave this special piece of historical architecture, this special piece of our culture to rot, has been a crime against this community, and it is time to bring justice to Roscoe Smith's name and to Monroe. I stand behind the Village and its efforts to take what belongs to this community, its history, its legacy, back. And I'm proud to do whatever I can to be a part of this building's story for what I hope is a short time in its long, long life, and I hope it's not too late, but it is high time to preserve Monroe. Thank you.
Mary Lou Garou?
Mary Lou Rogers Garou, 96 High Street. My backyard overlooks the water wheel. I've lived in my house 51 years. I've lived in Monroe 76 years. Roscoe's has always been part of the Village of Monroe. As a kid, he'd let us ice skate on his pond behind his house. His maid would come out and ask our names, as long as we were local kids. He'd let us skate on his pond, and it's just been a fixture in Monroe. The other day, I came downstairs, we looked out my sliding glass door, and the roof was gone off the water wheel. I said, "Oh, my God, did the, did the wind blow it off?" Because I know it's in bad repair. But no, the timbers had just been thrown to the side of it. I couldn't believe it. It was just unbelievable to me that a landmark like that was just thrown away. So now there's just the stone frame on the water wheel, the platform, the sides are gone, and the water wheel is still there. But I used to look out every morning at my sliding glass door, and that's what I would see. And it's a beautiful area, and I'd hate to see it go. So, anything you can do, I'm behind you 100%. Thank you. Thank you.
Tom Lawrence?
Good evening, Tom Lawrence. I'm at 83 Osseo Park Road, town of Monroe. Two years ago, I was able to purchase our family home and move back to Monroe. I was able to move back to my hometown. Driving in down Lakes Road, I couldn't believe the condition of the Roscoe Smith estate. And I was telling my wife, "Where do you see this place?" It's just, it's like a welcome to the town. I couldn't believe it. I spoke with a friend of mine, Dr. Arthur Mattingly, who is the head of the Preservation Department at the University of Missouri. He started the Department for Historical Preservation. It was the first one in the country. And he said, "Yeah," he said, "one of the tricks that the new owners do on historic sites is to just let it deteriorate until it can't be preserved, and then it's got to be torn down." He said, "It's a trick." I think that's, that's what's happened here, and I applaud your efforts to get this estate back. This town ought to be building monuments to Roscoe Smith. He was born in Monroe, he was born on a farm just north of the current Museum Village. He brought power to this town in 1906. He was, the first power line was, was down on the corner, right in front of the grist mill, right in front of his mill. To let this thing go is a sin. I would personally volunteer to help raise money. There are federal monies available, there are state monies available, as you folks probably know, to purchase this property. Good for you. Thank you for preserving this. Really appreciate it.
Is it Sharon Shear?
So, yeah, Sharon Shear, 130 North Main Street. I've also lived here since forever. I'm in often, and I keep you updated on how I felt. There's a couple of things we missed. There's six Artesian wells. There is, the, the wheel itself is falling apart. Over the years, we've had over five different mayors. Each one had a different philosophy. I've kind of watched each one logistically try to work a way to get it. But we're forgetting one thing. The homeowner did offer to donate that to the town of Monroe, and I think we're missing one thing. We denied him that. We said, "We don't want it," because apparently you're also missing another thing. There is DEC issues with the streams, and the dam has to be possibly restructured. Now, that is a quite expensive endeavor, so I do know that. And I also know, when Mayor Purcell was in, he sent an engineer in, and he did do a full, thorough investigation of the inside of the structure. So robber barons came in, stole all of the copper. The copper's been ripped out. It's been damaged on the inside to a level that it's serious. It's very serious. So the mayor made a decision at that time that it wasn't worth pursuing for over a million dollars' worth of possible renovations that would have to be done with the structure itself. So that I understand as well. And as I see it right now, is I'm not sure, and it is true, it's dilapidated to a point where it's almost unsalvageable. And it is true, we have been watching a lot of our historic sites fall into disrepair. But we're just skipping the fact that it was offered to us for free, and we didn't jump on that. And then, over the years, each mayor had a different philosophy, each one did something a little different. Some, you know, when there was negotiations going back and forth, you were trying to get it in different ways. But right now, to take it, I just feel the way that we're doing it, it, you know, when we could have had it over 10 years ago, and it couldn't be in this structure that it's right now, it's kind of a sin. Because Mayor Mancuso was the first one that kind of dropped the ball way back in, like, the 80s or 70s. And then it went from one mayor to another mayor to another mayor, and, and it is heart-wrenching, and it is disappointing to see something as fabulous as Roscoe Smith, a respected entrepreneur, a genius, to see it, to fall, to disrepair the way that it has fallen. It is heart-wrenching. And to drive by there, and I go on Lakes Road often because I do a lot of out-of-the-town work, it breaks my heart to watch it just fall apart. Now, right now, the bridges are disintegrated. Mayor Dwyer and I had a talk about it. He actually met with me, and we spoke about this in length, about some plans that you might have for it going forward. But I do hope that we get it. I do hear that Timmy Mitz made an offer to the owner, and he said, "I was offering to take it as well, to make it into a historic site." But if you're going to do it, I don't really care who does it, you, Timmy, the owner, somebody's got to take it, somebody's got to fix it, save whatever's left. We have an exact replicate of the Tappan Zee Bridge, which just fell apart. One of the bridges, our exact replica of the Tappan Zee Bridge, it's gone. It's almost fully gone. The wheel, like she just said, collapsed, and it's just really sad to watch. It's a beautiful piece of property. I'd love to see it as a park. I'd love to see us save it. I don't care who saves it. I don't care if Timmy takes it and you let him have it. I don't care if you take it by eminent domain. I just want it to be taken so that we can have a, something. And also, as far as environmentally, the animals love it back there, and it would be an environmental catch and a, and a plus and a star in our cap to get that environmentally. So at the end of the day, just do what you can, and that's it.
Joseph Haspel?
Hi, my name's been banned from the record already. When you went through the documents that you've received today, it didn't seem to include the document that I provided. Did you not receive it?
What document was that?
This document. You've received, you've received it as opposition to the motion. I also emailed it to the village and hand-delivered it to the village, saying to accept this as the op, the, to place on the record with respect to the tonight's public hearing.
We will certainly do so. I did not get it as something that you wish to be placed as part of this record. I just received it as part of the tiara, but we will certainly include it.
I have another copy. In your presentation, it was longed on stuff that is not important to this proceeding, which is the history of the planning process and the prior litigations. In short, on what is important to the eminent domain proceeding, which is what it will cost the village. As I've indicated in these papers, and I'm sure you've seen it, and I just want to, I don't want to read the entire thing into the record. We'd be here filibustering until September. But one of the requirements to pursue eminent domain, and from my perspective, the law requires it, is for the public to be made aware of the costs and how it's going to be funded. As my research indicates, the village had a budget of roughly $11 million last year. The minimum it would cost, bare minimum, for this village to restore, to take the property and restore the property, would be $6 million. $6 million the village does not have. In order for the village to obtain that money, it would have to do a bond. A bond would require a whole separate set of public hearings and a permissive referendum. So before we can go forward with eminent domain, the law requires the village board to tell the public what it's going to cost and how it's going to be funded. For a village with a budget of $11 million to pay, again, a minimum, and the reason I get to the minimum is because it was close to 4 million, uh, 4 and 1/2 million, that's in the papers, the numbers, that the property was purchased for less than two years ago. Mayor Dwyer rejected Mayor Purcell's $3 million to fix it in 2014, saying in 2018, Mayor Dwyer, then trustee Dwyer says, "It could be done for a million two tops." Well, construction costs from 2018 to construction costs today would make that million two tops probably closer to 2.4 million, which is probably, which is still less than what the village's professionals said in 2014 would cost $3 million. Now, that wasn't our professionals, that was the village's professionals. The village's professionals said in 2014, "This place should be demolished. It is past the point of recovery." What did my client, W.C. Lincoln, do at that point in time? He said, "If you want it, you can have it. All you have to do is get it, let us finish our planning, and it's yours, free of charge." If Mayor Dwyer could get together a bunch of volunteers and reduce the cost to something that is affordable, that's fine. But it never happened. It never happened, and while my client was waiting to give the property away, the weather comes, the storms come, the wind comes, the vandals come, and at this point in time, that place is a threat to the public. Because if somebody goes on, the roof's coming down, it's simply going to fall apart on its own if this is not done immediately. My client is not going to do it, which is why my client said he would give it away. We need to discuss, at the very least, the budget and how it's going to happen, and that would have to be included into this process. Because without doing it, this board would be engaged in what it has been engaged for a long time, clandestine activities. How did we get to this point today? How did we get to a, a hearing, a desire, without the public knowing what is on the mind of the board for the last 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? We get here today on a notice that simply says, "We want to take this property." And everybody here, including me, would be great if that property could be restored, but it can't. And that's something that has to be dealt with, with the public. My client, again, was willing to give it to you to restore it. All it had to do is, you know, we reject the comments, which is completely outside the scope of eminent domain, that the, that the, that the approval has lapsed in any way, shape, or form. But that's neither here nor there, it doesn't really have to do. The planning board, the village board, everybody was happy to go forward in accordance with the stipulation that this court, that this village entered, to provide approvals to my client. My client would provide the property to the village, but it didn't happen. On the record, if anybody in the public wants a copy of these papers, which sets forth the entire history, complete with the budget, complete with the prior determinations by the village's engineers, professionals indicating, the village's professionals indicated in 2014 that this property cannot be preserved. It's simply not economically feasible. And in the last 10 years, I don't think the property's improved. So, again, if anybody in the public wants a copy of these papers, I'll be glad to provide it. It's part of the record, but with me, you don't have to foil it. Just give me a call, I'll be glad to email it to you. This gives the entire history. And with that, again, I don't feel like reading the whole thing into the record since it is part of the record.
Simon Jacobs?
Good afternoon. I would like to add in addition what Mr. Haspel told, that W.C. Lincoln actually even offered $50,000, it's on the record, to help this mayor restore this property, and he also rejected that. Trustee Carl is probably aware of that. Thank you.
And Tim Mitz?
Hello, everybody. I'm sure you know who I am. Good evening. Let's give a little background to the crowd, too, so we all understand. I'm a little complex.
Could you just state your address, please?
Timothy Mitz, 236 High Street at Rest Haven. You're welcome. We're a little complex here. First of all, for the new members, and I learned this over the years, in 2001, Mr. Mancuso tried to take the property through eminent domain, he failed. During 2003, it was attempted again, they failed. In 2008, the board had a chance to do it, but was never, never completed its goal to do it in 2008 when John Carl was on the board. What is the difference between then and now of bringing this forward? And it's the dollars. It sold for $800,000. Yet we did make an offer. I have been in the House. I know what's going on, but I'm not going to share it with this board, because this board has to make its own decision. But I remember sitting here, and I had a discussion with the mayor when he was trustee, and Mr. Purcell, Mayor Purcell, sat there and said, "It costs $3 million to fix this place. Let's knock it down, let's make it a park." That wasn't preserving Monroe. That was tearing a building down. That's like tearing Rest Haven down. And Rest Haven doesn't even get a lot of respect it should get from other department heads. It does from this board, but not from other department heads. Why would somebody want to be involved with this process? I'm crazy for putting up with it for now for seven years. But the reality is, is that you have to make a determination now. Personal opinion, the property's worth $4 million plus. Where's the village going to get that money from? The town decided to buy up some property. The town is now $5 million in debt, running 945, 945,000 per year, year after year, in debt rise. So this year, they're going to be at $6 million. Are we going to get in that same rut? I'm aware that at one point, that property was offered to the village for whatever the thing may have been when John was in office in 2008. I know they all wanted to do something, but how are you going to do it? If it's 1.2 million in repairs, and I don't agree with that number either, from what I've seen, where are we going to get that money? Our company, our organization between town and village pay over $100,000 a year in taxes, between village, town, county, school taxes. Where's it going to come? I know for a fact, from my understanding, information been given to me, at one point, the question was addressed, maybe we'll give it to, maybe we'll acquire it and ask Museum Village to take and manage the property. I heard that offer was rejected. How are you going to do this? And yes, I did make the offer. I've been telling you since day one, if the village didn't act, I would act. I'm not worried about the million dollars it's going to cost, and I don't care what people on the street have to say about me. We do what we do. We've shown our colors. We preserved, we preserved Rest Haven, we're preserving Pine Crest, and we're willing to preserve the other. But you've got to figure again, how are you going to explain to taxpayers? We're going to pay whatever it is. We're going to pay, whatever it is, 4 million, 5 million, 6 million, 2 million, and by the way, we've got to put another million into the property. How are we going to explain that? I truly believe that that property should be the historical home. I truly believe Roscoe Smith had significance in this community. In fact, back, and I may have told you this once before, in 1985, I had to do a school paper from an internship at Orange and Rockland about Roscoe Smith, and how he started Orange and Rockland at the turn of the century. But again, it's going to end up coming down to numbers. And I think that what I'm hearing is, the board here wants to preserve. I've had numerous conversations with people on the board about it, and I truly believe it. And I think they just want what they want. I don't know what's right or what's wrong. What I do know is, we've got to stop the politics. And your department heads have to stop the politics. Because I'll tell you straight out, you can't trust some of your department heads, and I know from firsthand. They don't have experience in any of this. They have no idea how to fix, how to fix a building up. Mayor, you do, you're in construction, you understand it, but not everybody knows how to do it, and it's not easy work. It's not easy work, and it's only a love of labor. And these people out here, they, I know they all love Monroe. We have to stop this. Is it worth the eminent domain fight? Is it worth 4 million? Is it worth 6 million? Is it worth 2 million fight? I don't know. But I've always said I'd help out. I've even offered years ago, I would buy it, renovate it, and lease it back to the village, so it didn't cost the village much money. But it seems like we're stuck in this time warp, this circle, 2001, 2003. Oh, we got something in 2008, but the market went bad. Now we're in 2023. The people who want it done, they want to see this property saved, and you're the ones that can save it. And it's saved by your decisions, not by the money that any of us can put up. I've talked, we agree with some things, we don't agree with everything. But the reality is, you've got to really weigh out the reality of the situation and bring it to an end. This community wants that house, but the board needs to figure out what it's going to do and stop at 20, it's almost 25 years now, cycle. So with that said, I hope you really think about the best way to do this with the village. I know it stinks, we want to see the full 18 acres, we may not be able to. How are you going to maintain it? Like I said, I know it was offered to Museum Village, they have no desire. They've got problems over there in their own buildings, and I know that for a fact. So I suggest to this board to think about it, the best way to do it. If I can help in any way, I'd be more than happy to. But I think we need to bring this to an end, even if we only get half what we want. But my tentative agreement, or discussion, I should say, with the owner was trying to preserve from the bridge to the corner, at least. But I, I was told that this proceeding actually put a hamper on everything. And you know I'm very dedicated and loyal to this community. I have been since I've gotten here. We've got millions of dollars invested, and you guys have millions of hours invested of your life every day trying to get things resolved. So with that, I say thank you for listening to me this evening, and I hope you all can come together and save Roscoe Smith's house once and for all. Thank you.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to speak with respect to the eminent domain? Yes?
Really wasn't planning on speaking, but listening to everybody. Carol Hawkes, Monroe, New York, Tana Monroe. I applaud this board. I know it's, I've lived here all my life, and I would love to see that restored, as many of the other Monroe residents here have shared. Maybe I'd like to hear more about what some people have brought up, about where the money would come from, are there bonds, you know, and how that would work? Because I think maybe it would put more people at ease if we knew a little bit more on that side. It's a beautiful property. Unfortunately, as everyone has said, it's fallen into disrepair, and it's very, has a lot of historical significance, and I've heard from many people, they would love to see that restored. So I thank the board for, you know, trying to do that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll adjourn until September 5th, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. We're going to take a five-minute recess, just to adjust the, the agenda. Ask the board for a motion to adjourn the public hearing on property acquisition of the Roscoe Smith estate.
Until September 5th.
Until September 5th, yes, please.
Carl will make that motion.
And Barringer will second?
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. And you have that, Kim? Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right, next order of business is a due process hearing regarding 80 North Main Street, tax map 207-3-1. I need a motion to open the due process hearing.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay, I don't have anything in front of me, do I?
Just a, just a document.
Okay.
It's not there.
It's not there.
There's nothing there. There's nothing there.
Unsupported file type is what.
Okay, so, let me go through it, and then we can just kind of have a conversation. So, a due process hearing is being held today, August 15th, at 7:00 PM, in the boardroom of the Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York. The hearing is to be held to review a violation issued by the Village of Monroe Building Department on the following property within the Village of Monroe, 80 North Main Street, tax map 207-3-1, as per Village Code Section 155A-6E of the general requirements. All name must be kept free of dead or dying trees in accumulation of brush, shrubs, weeds, grass, stumps, roots, excessive and or obnoxious growth, garbage, refuge, or debris which would either tend to start a fire or increase the intensity of a fire, started or caused poisoning or irritation to people or animals, or cause or tend to cause or enhance an unhealthy or dangerous obnoxious condition on the said property or any adjacent or neighboring property. The specific violation is garbage, rubbish, and debris in driveway. So I've been out there myself, has the board also. Okay, so everybody knows the, the condition, and they know the location. Yes? Okay. So at this point, I'm interested to hear from anyone representing 80 North Main Street, and we'll keep that open a moment, and we'll see what comes our way.
Mayor, I was, I stopped up there today. That's the house on the corner of North Main and Charlton?
Will you park on Charlton? Yes, sir.
That's, I believe, Mary Hall's old house, but I didn't see much going on there. It was a contractor with a vehicle backed in the driveway.
And was everything picked up?
I didn't see anything laying, laying on the ground.
According?
As of yesterday, it was still there. I don't know if they went back out today.
Okay.
I didn't really see anything much out of the ordinary, so.
I'll send it back over to double check it before I send it out. You can do something in the future.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is, um...
Well, you should reflect that no one is here to represent the property owner, and you can, at that point, take action to close the public hearing.
Okay, just to make note that there is no one here in attendance representing 80 North Main Street, and we should also take note that the board needs to address this at this time, but later on in the meeting, we'll have a, an opportunity to do so. But at this point, I'd like to close this due process hearing. I need a motion?
Barringer will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, next order of business is the department reports as submitted by the department heads. I need a motion to accept as submitted.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business is the approval of meeting minutes from July 13th, 2023, the special executive session meeting. I need a motion to accept the meetings, meeting minutes as submitted by the clerk.
Ferraro will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Ferraro, aye.
Barringer Epstein.
Carl Epstein.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay. Next order of business is the approval of meeting minutes from the July 18th meeting of 2023. I need a motion to accept them as submitted by the clerk.
Barringer will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Oh, excuse me.
You have to abstain.
I have to abstain, I just realized that, thank you. Okay, next order of business, trustee Barringer.
Okay. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the resignation of full-time dispatcher Alexandria Travato, effective August 15th, 2023. The Board of Trustees wishes Alexandria well in her future endeavors, and I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Ferraro, second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, trustee Barringer.
Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the resignation of part-time dispatcher Richard Haley, effective August 30th, 2023. The Board of Trustees wishes Rich well in his new position with the Village of Monroe, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
Trustee Barringer, next order?
Okay, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of Police Chief Guzman and appoints Richard Haley to the position of full-time dispatcher created by the resignation of Alexandria Travato. Mr. Haley is currently employed as a public safety dispatcher by the Orange County Division of Emergency Communications, Orange 911. Mr. Haley has also been a part-time and full-time employee with the Village of Monroe since 2015. Orange County Department of Human Resources has given preapproval for the transfer. His appointment will be effective August 30th, 2023, at the starting six-year step of $62,263 as per the current agreement with the Village of Monroe and Police Benevolent Association, and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Ferraro, second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, we're going to table that, I'm going to pick it up with the board under personnel. Okay, next order of business is the proposed resolution number two of 202023, comprehensive plan and scheduling of the public hearing. I'm sorry? Okay, whereas the Board of Trustees has been working diligently to update its comprehensive plan and the proposed introductory local laws that seek to implement the goals of the said plan, and now therefore be resolved that a copy of the amended comprehensive plan and introductory local laws 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 of 2023 is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer and before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, can be further resolved that a copy of the aforementioned amended comprehensive plan and introductory local laws 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Got it. You're right. I mean, the state, because I just kept going, but it's 4, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14.
All right, let's go back. Just for the public, just for the public and for the record, I'm going to redo the resolution.
Just amend it to say that the local laws should be 4, 5, 6...
10, 11, 12.
10, 11, 12.
Yeah.
13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18.
Yeah, so it's, it sounds like we're making a quilt, so let's just redo it. Okay? Good. Is the top page correct?
The top of the page, yes.
Okay. All right, so as follows, the amendments to the comprehensive plan and proposed introductory local laws of number 4, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 of 2023, and scheduling of public hearings. Whereas the Board of Trustees has been working diligently to update its comprehensive plan and the proposed introductory local laws that seek to implement the goals of said plan, and now therefore be resolved that a copy of the amended comprehensive plan and introductory local laws 4, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 of 2023 is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be it further resolved that the copy of the aforementioned amended comprehensive plan and introductory local laws 4, 5, 6, 7, excuse me, 4, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 of 2023, and the scheduling of the public hearings, excuse me, of 2023, is belated upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said amended comprehensive plan and proposed local laws at Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York, on September 5th at 7:00 PM, and be it further resolved that the clerk shall publish or course to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than 10 days prior there to. I need a motion to set this...
Mr. Mayor, in the second page where we're going to go through, okay, all right, never mind.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so long as, when you get to it, you describe each local law.
Okay, so let's, let's pause a moment. So before I ask for the motion, let me read the local laws.
Well, yes, there's a summary of each local law that will be published in the paper, that's exactly right.
Okay, so we're going to read this. Okay, please take note that during its, no, excuse me, August 15th, 2023, board meeting of the Village of Monroe, Board of Trustees authorized a public hearing to be scheduled on Tuesday, September 5th, at 2023 at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the Village Monroe, Monroe, New York, for the public review and input of the amended comprehensive plan and proposed introductory local laws that seek to implement the goals of said plan. First off is local law four of 2023, is the Village of Monroe Landmark's Preservation, which law provides for the identification, protection, and perpetuation of buildings, structures, signs, features, improvements, sites, and areas within the village that reflect special elements of the Monroe's historical, architectural, cultural, economic, and/or aesthetic heritage. Local law five of 2023, Village of Monroe Place of Worship and Schools, which promotes individual constitutional rights to freedom of assembly and the free exercise of religion by amending the zoning law to allow and regulate residential gathering places, neighborhood places of worship, community places of worship, and schools of general instruction in certain zoning districts while maintaining the established residential character and quality of life of existing neighborhoods, and protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the Village of Monroe residents. Local law number six of 2023, Amendment to the Village of Monroe Architectural Review, which expands the existing authority for the architectural review to special permits and homes located in the Village of Monroe's historic district, and who is listed or eligible to be listed on the New York State Registry of Historic Places. Local law 10 of 2023, The Village of Monroe Illegal Residential Occupancy, which amends the zoning law to address the proliferation of illegal conversions of single and two-family homes into multiple dwelling units in illegal boarding houses, identifies the criteria by which the building apartment can presume an illegal conversion and impose civil and criminal penalties upon conviction of same. Local law 11 of 2023, The Village of Monroe Parking of Commercial and Oversized Vehicles and Equipment, which regulates commercial vehicle parking and storage on any lot in the SR 20, SR 10, or URM zoning districts. Local law 12 of 2023, The Village of Monroe Building Height and Far Clarification, which refine the definitions associated with building height and floor area ratio, and defines the grade plane to prevent artificially increasing existing lot grade to thwart height and far regulations. Local law 13 of 2023, The Village of Monroe Light Industry District, which establishes a new use category, light industry, and amends the zoning map so as to apply the new use to all lots currently zoned, general business, and having frontage on the New York State Route 208 or Gilbert Street Extension west of the Orange County Heritage Trail. Local law 14, The Village of Monroe Revisions to the General Business GB Zoning Bulk Regulations, which establishes a minimum floor area per tenant space for any new commercial buildings constructed within the village but outside the downtown CB district. Local law 16, The Village of Monroe Used, excuse me, Mixed Use Multifamily in the CB District, which establishes a new use, mixed use multifamily over commercial in the commercial district, business CB district, which accompanying bulk and special permit requirement... which accompanying bulk and special permit requirements. Local law seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three, is the Village of Monroe Multi-Family Conversions, which modifies the use tables contained in the zoning law to eliminate commercial to residential conversions as listed in Attachment one, Table of District Uses and Bulk Regulations, C B District, and conversion of existing residential to multifamily, and conversion of existing residential to two-family as listed in Attachment five, Table of District Uses and Bulk Regulations, U R M District. Local law eighteen of two thousand and twenty-three, Village Monroe Out of Character Dwellings, establishes thresholds applied to single-family home construction or stab, uh, excuse me, expansion that, if exceeded, requires site plan approval to ensure that the house is in keeping with the neighborhood character. Local law nineteen of two thousand and twenty-three, Village Monroe Urban Residential Multifamily, which eliminates the urban residential multifamily districts from vacant lands and lands that have not been approved or developed for multifamily or single-family attached residences.
Did you read fifteen? Yeah, go back to local law fifteen.
My apologies. Uh, local law number fifteen, Village Monroe General Zoning Map Changes, which amends, changes which amends the zoning map to rezone one lot, S B L two thirteen dash one dash six, located in the G B District into the adjacent C B District. A copy of the amended comprehensive plan and all local laws are available for review at the Village Hall and are posted to the village's website following tonight's meeting. Thank you. All persons interested in the amended comprehensive plan or proposed local laws may appear in person or by agent. All written communications should be addressed to Mayor Neil S. Dwyer and received prior to the public hearing. Having said that, I need a motion to set the calendar for these, uh, local laws and the comprehensive plan, public hearing.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
So you've already, I guess, gone through the proposed resolution of local law four, five, six? I'm not quite sure why these are here. All right, so, so, am I looking at an old? It says introductory local.
Oh, yes, because what happened was we had done those already.
Okay. All right. Okay, so they've already been introduced?
Yes, and they've been changed.
So we're reintroducing local law number four?
Yeah, one, two, three, six.
So I think the board should just note that you're reintroducing local laws four, five, and six that you already went through merely because they were, um, modified.
Well, what I just read on four, five, and six is correct?
Is correct, yes.
Okay, so the introduction of local law four of two thousand and twenty-three, the Village of Monroe's Landmark Preservation and Scheduling of the Public Hearing, we've done that.
But we're going to do it again because there's been changes made, so you're reintroducing.
Let's, let's just, let's just reflect that we just went through all of the local laws, and many of them had been, some of them had been introduced at prior meetings, including local law four, five, and six. So this is just a notice on the record that they've been reintroduced this evening, and they are part of the public hearing that you just set, and they've been reintroduced because they have been modified. So all of these local laws have now been sent to the county. They've all been noticed for the public hearing. They've been introduced for the first time tonight or reintroduced. And reintroduced is specific to local laws four, Landmark Preservation and Sket- Landmark Preservation, five, Place of Worship, Schools of Ske- of, um, and Schools, and six, which is Architectural Review. So those three have been introduced before and are simply being reintroduced tonight and placed upon the, uh, board's desk. I, I don't think you need resolutions necessarily reintroducing them. But let the record reflect that.
Is everything in, in yellow being rewritten today?
We're gonna have to be at the next public hearing, we're gonna have a public hearing on everything. All of those laws and the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so why don't we do it formally? Make a motion to reintroduce, uh, local laws four, five, and six of two thousand and twenty-three as read, uh, uh, as read by the mayor prior, and just reintroduce them formally on the record tonight.
And just for my edification, one of these read originally?
We had done it twice, we've done it at the next, I think, and I have to look on my sheet, but, um, they've been twice we've had, um, public hearings and.
And made amendments.
And modifications.
We've never adopted anything because we were still renewing them.
Okay.
We've left all day.
Okay, so let the record reflect that local laws four, five, and six are a reflection of further amendments, and the scheduling of the public hearing is, September five at seven P M.
And you'll put that in the form of a motion?
I'll put that, well, I'll have somebody put that in the form of a motion.
Berenger will make that motion.
Second?
Carl will second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
You know, it's a little confusing because these have been before the board.
Let's finish this. Okay? Okay, uh, let's see, five E, Village of Monroe Resolution Extending the Temporary Suspension of Demolition and Modification Permits Issued Pursuant to Chapter eighty of the Village of Monroe Code for Structures Located Within the Village of Monroe's Historic District or Listed or Eligible to be Listed on the State or National Registry of Historic Places. Whereas on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the Village Board of Trustees enacted local law three of two thousand and twenty-three, which suspended all permits pursuant to Chapter eighty of the Village of Monroe Code for Structural Modification and or Demolition of any and all buildings or structures located within the historic district or identified as historic on the Cultural Resource Information System known as C R I S, published by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. And whereas said local law provided for an extension of a temporary suspension of permitting of one additional period of up to three months by resolution of the Village Board upon a finding of need for such extended, and whereas, uh, the Village Board finds and determines that additional time is required in the, in?
Required to enact, I'm sorry.
To enact, okay.
Local laws that protect the villages.
Yeah. And structures from irreparable loss through insensitive modification of the historic character or completion, uh, destruction, or complete destruction. Now, it will therefore be resolved at local law number three of two thousand and twenty-three, temporarily suspending demolition and or modification permits issued pursuant to Chapter eighty of the Village of Monroe Code for Structures Located Within the Village's Historic District or Listed or Eligible to be Listed on the State or National Registry of Historic Places, hereby extended for the period of three months from September seventh of two thousand and twenty-three to December seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. I need a motion to permit, uh, to pass this or permit this, uh, extension, I'm sorry.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
So carried. Next order of business, uh, I do have, uh, six A. Do we, we getting nailed in on that? I, I don't know if we did, did we, I'm talking about the window. I don't know. I know he just gave us an email or a text or something, but have you read through all more?
Uh, no, the only thing I got is, um, we had, the discussion we had this morning.
Yeah. I'm gonna table it, okay?
Yeah, um.
We haven't, you and I haven't, at least in my opinion.
All right, you wanna hold off on it? I know there was a test, but it was the same numbers that we had.
He said he corrected something, but then, you know, I haven't, I mean, the board hasn't seen it, you haven't seen it.
Second.
Why don't you look that up? I think that what we'll do is six A, we're gonna table for a moment.
Stand by one, that was.
Uh, six A and B, I want y'all.
It's, it's what we, it's what I had. Stand by one here. Count was fifty-four, six fifty. Feeny was fifty-six. Yeah, I mean.
But I don't think, when I left this conversation, we were asking about prevailing wage, and I don't.
I never heard anything more back, I thought you were handling that today.
No, I haven't heard anything. All right, we're gonna table then, six A. Let's go to six B, okay? Which is the, uh, the P R B.
Yep. Okay, uh, the Water Department requests approval for the repairing of the Pressure Regulator Vault in front of Stop and Shop on Seventeen M, utilizing TAM Enterprise in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred dollars from budget line, which we, it wasn't budgeted, so we're gonna have to figure out where that's gonna come from.
Sure.
Um, resolve, the Board of Trustees approves a request from the Water Department to repair the Pressure Regulator Vault in front of Stop and Shop, utilizing TAM Enterprise in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred dollars from F eighty-three forty, forty-five thirty, Distribution Equipment Maintenance.
Right.
And I will put that in a form of a motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay, next order of business is the Spring Hill Apartment Bond Release Request. Resolve, the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Village Engineer John O'Rourke, P E of Langantully Engineering, for the release of the Spring Hill Apartments Bond. All work is completed to date as in conformance to the approved plans. I need a motion to accept the resolution, uh, as submitted by the, uh, village's engineer.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay, okay, okay. All right, next order of business, trustee Carl.
Yep, authorization to advertise for the, we're doing the sludge one, right?
No, this is Calvin.
Calvin Terrace, let's do that one first. Resolve, the Board of Trustees authorize a village clerk to place a legal notice in the Times Herald Record advertising the Calvin Terrace Water Main Replacement Project provided by the Village Engineer Langantully Engineering, P C, thirty-one thirty-two Route two oh seven Campbell Hall, New York, one zero nine one six, with a bid opening scheduled for Thursday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at ten A M. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second, please.
Berenger will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
This'll be the last piece of asbestos, uh, cement water main on our water system.
That's awesome.
That'll be done.
Good. Looking forward. Uh, the sludge?
Let's do this, let's do the sludge.
Six A, uh, E.
Resolve, the Board of Trustees authorize a village clerk to place a legal notice in the Times Herald Record advertising the Sludge Lagoon Reconstruction provided by the Village Engineer Langantully Engineering, P C, thirty-one thirty-two Route two oh seven Campbell Hall, New York, one oh nine one six, with a bid opening scheduled for Thursday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at ten thirty A M. And I'll put that in form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. All right, next order of business is the, uh, agreement, uh, for an appraisal. So resolve, the Board of Trustees authorize Mayor Dwyer to sign an agreement with Accrily and Hubble Appraisal Corp. of ten seventy-two Main Street, Fishical, New York, one two five two four, for the purposes of an appraisal of nineteen point eight acre property with several structures in with disrepair identified by S B L two eleven dash one dash one. These services will be allocated from budget line, A, one four four zero point four five zero Engineering Services. I need a motion to accept them as submitted.
Berenger will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay. Next order of business, uh, trustee Carl. Uh, dredging?
What's that?
Can you do the dredging, pause, yeah.
Um, Mr. Mayor, can we go back to Accrily and Hubble?
Stand by one second, hang on a minute.
Yep, yep, yep.
My understanding is that agreement has been signed. So this would actually be a motion to ratify the authorization.
I need a motion to, uh, ratify the, uh, action that was taken to agree to, uh, to acquire their services.
Berenger, sorry.
Okay, I need a motion. First, we, we approved it, we signed it, I signed the contract to get this guy in motion, this firm, but I need the board to ratify it, agreeing to it.
I'll second it.
So Berenger and Ferraro?
Ferraro seconds.
Okay, call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay, uh, the bid award for South Pond Dredging Project.
Yep. Uh, on Friday, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, a bid opening was held at ten A M. A total of four bids were submitted for the South Pond Dredging Project. Noble Environmental Specialty Services, five hundred. Technology Drive, Cannonsburg, Pennsylvania, one five three one seven was the lowest bidder on the project submitting a bid in the amount of nine hundred, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, eighty-six cents. Eric Zimmerman, P E. Sorry about that. Reviewed all bids and recommended to the board to award the bid to Noble Environmental Specialty Services, the lowest responsible bidder. Resolve, the Board of Trustees accept the engineer's recommendation and awards the bid for South Pond Dredging Project to Noble Specialty Services, five hundred Technology Drive, Cannons, Cannonsburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of nine hundred, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. And I'll put that into a form of a motion.
Can I get a second? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
I would just note that I did review that contract, and I agree with it.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next order of business is the Water Department, trustee Carl.
Where am I here?
Six H.
Six H, you got it.
All right, resolve, the boards, the Board of Trustees approves the attendance of Water Treatment Plant Operator Ernest Mayby at the New York State Conference of Mayor's Public Works Training School, October sixteenth to October eighteenth in Lake Placid. Approximate total cost for the conference, including program fees and hotel stay, is nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars to be allocated from budget line, F eighty-three ten point four two, uh, point four seven two zero, purification education. A Village Monroe vehicle will be utilized for transportation, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Berenger will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, uh, six I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, are local laws, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, respectively.
Yeah, I, I think unfortunately, we probably should have formally introduced the local laws and then set the public hearing, but, uh, let the rec- record reflect that the, uh, board in setting the public hearing for these local laws, which are introduced for the first time tonight on the board, to the board, um, each local law was described in summary form, uh, and so you would have a motion to introduce those local laws, all of them. Uh, note that they've been summarized on the record and, and that a public hearing has already been set.
Okay, so, uh, I'd like to state the following. Uh, introductory local laws, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, have all been introduced tonight and summarized by myself, Mayor Dwyer. And I need to, uh, set the public hearing date of September fifth, restate that, actually, at seven P M. Would you like me to take a motion then again?
And you would put that on the record in the form of a motion?
Okay, I, I, I put that in the form of a motion, but I think I'd rather just have one of my trustees do that.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Ferraro, second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye. Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye. Okay, next order of business, the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees Resolution Concerning Violation of Property Maintenance of 80 North Main Street, SBL 207-3-1. As per Village Code Article 1, Section 155A-6E, failure to control trash and rubbish or land must be kept free of dead dying trees and accumulation of brush, shrubs, weeds, grass, stumps, roots, and excessive end or noxious growth, garbage, refuge, or debris, which would either tend to start a fire or increase the intensity of a fire already started or cause poisoning or irritation to people or animals or cause to be tend, or cause or tend to cause, or enhance an unhealthy and dangerous or obnoxious condition on said property or any adjacent or neighborly property. This specific violation is garbage, rubbish, and debris, and the driveway there has been failure to remedy. Whereas the longstanding violation of the Village of Monroe Property Maintenance 155A-6E of the Village Code of Monroe, which have existed at 68 North Main Street, Village of Monroe 10950, designated as tax map, SBL 207-3-1, and whereas the property owner has been given proper and lawful notice of said violation and have been directed to correct the violation, and whereas the property owner was given due notice of a due process hearing to be held by the Board of Trustees on August 15th of 2023 at 7:00 p.m., and whereas the owner did not appear, and whereas the owner has not taken the steps to correct the violation, and the violation still exists, and whereas the Board of Trustees do authorize pursuant to Section 155-A-8 of the Property Maintenance Law to authorize the village to undertake such remedy of such violation at the property owner's expense and cost. Be further resolved that the village clerk shall mail a certified copy of this resolution that would be mailed to the property owner via certified mail. Be further resolved any violation that remains uncorrected on the property as of today, August 15th, 2023. The Board of Trustees hereby authorize the village, its contractors, or agents to enter upon the property to correct the effort said of violation, and that all costs incurred by the village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner, and such charge shall be added to the tax bill of the property owner if not paid within 30 days of notification to the last known address of the property owner or as shown, as shown in the village's tax map records. Do we want to include contingent upon inspection tomorrow? So upon a contingent...
Adopted, subject to the building inspection.
Yep, so I'd like someone to make a motion that we adopt the resolution as stated, contingent upon the Building Department going out tomorrow, August 16th, first thing in the morning, to confirm the work has been completed or not. If it's not, this is the resolution we adopt tonight.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, excuse me. Okay, the event application of Santa at Rest Haven December 2nd, 2023. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approve an event application submitted by 236 High Street LLC to meet Santa and Mrs. Claus at Rest Haven after landing by helicopter at Museum Village on Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The event route to escort Santa and Mrs. Claus in a horse-drawn carriage is as follows. Museum Village onto Route 17M to Gilbert Street, right onto Gilbert and left onto High. Approval is contingent upon receipt of the approval of the New York State Department of Transportation 33-B permit allowing the Santa Claus procession on 17M, and approval from the town of Blooming Grove. In the event that the DOT approval is not obtained, the event application is revoked without said procession upon 17M. The application has been reviewed and approved by the DPW, Building, and Police Departments. Additional police services include four, excuse me, six officers on three hours overtime to assist with the escort from Museum Village to Rest Haven. The total cost of additional police services is $1,314, which 236 High Street LLC is responsible for reimbursing 20% of those costs or $262.80. Mr. Mitz has opted to reimburse the village the total amount of said police services of $1,314. I need a motion to accept this application as submitted.
Farraro will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion. Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Now, be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees has waived the $15 application fee due to preservation of Rest Havens, Inc., being a nonprofit organization. I need a motion to adopt that.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, event application in the Monroe Crop Hunger Walk. An event application has been submitted by Fred Schuper, Representative of Monroe Methodist Church, to hold a 27th Annual Crop Hunger Walk on Sundays of October 22nd, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:30, utilizing the walking path on the Lower Mill Pond. The walk will begin at the Methodist Church located on Maple Avenue and circle around the pond two times before returning to the church via State Road. The application has reviewed, has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, DPW, and Police Department. Police officers will monitor vehicular and pedestrian traffic during the event. There is no road closures, and there are no additional costs for additional police protection for this event. Due to the church being a not-for-profit agency and as a sole volunteer, excuse me, as a volunteer-financed event, Mr. Schuper has requested a $50 application fee to be waived. So now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the request of Mr. Fred Schuper, Representative of the Monroe United Methodist Church, to sponsor the 27th Annual Monroe Crop Hunger Walk on October 22nd from 2:00 to 4:30, which will begin and end at the Methodist Church on 47 Maple Avenue. The walk will utilize the Lower Mill Pond walking path. Sign-off for the event has been made by the Building, DPW, and Police Departments. I need a motion to accept it as submitted.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion. Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
And Dwyer, aye. Further to resolve, the Board of Trustees waive the $50 fee to the event and the Methodist Church. I need a motion?
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order is the event application in South Orange YMCA Color Run. An event application was submitted by the South Orange YMCA for Color Run to be held on Saturday, October 7th, utilizing the walking paths around Crane Park setting up for the, in front of Beck's Hardware. The application has been reviewed and approved by the DPW and Building Departments. The Police Department has also reviewed and approved the application. Additional police services include two officers and three hours overtime to assist with the traffic control of Mill Pond Parkway and Lake Street. Officers will monitor the event and provide any necessary assistance. Additional police, cost of police service is $488, of which 20% is to be paid by the YMCA, which is $87.60. The YMCA has also submitted a request for the $50 application fee to be waived as they are a not-for-profit organization. So first I need to resolve that we approve the event as submitted by the YMCA for the Color Run.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion. Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, and further be resolved that they, we waive the fee for the nonprofit. I need a motion, please.
Carl will make that motion.
Farraro, second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Trustee Barringer, PD Vehicle Surplus.
Whereas state law requires equipment no longer needed by a municipality be sold at fair market value after declaring it surplus and no longer needed, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of Police Chief Guzman and declares the following equipment surplus to the needs of the village and authorizes it to be auctioned through Auctions International to the highest bidder. Vehicles to be auctioned are as followed. Vehicle number 453, 2016 Ford Explorer, VIN number 1FM5K8AR3GGC67965, and vehicle number 461, 2017 Ford Explorer, VIN number 1FM5K8R2HGC58059. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Farraro, second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, resolution to establish lead agency pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SECP, for the purpose of amending the Village of Monroe Comprehensive Plan and proposed implementation of local laws. At a regularly scheduled public meeting, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, held at Village Hall on August 15th, whereas the Board of Trustees finds and determines that it's reasonable and appropriate to update its comprehensive plan from time to time in the zoning law to implement the recommendations of the comprehensive plan in order to protect the public health and general welfare of its citizens, and whereas the Board of Trustees has been working diligently to update its 2017 comprehensive plan, and during said review has determined that some of the worthy goals and identified in the 2017 comprehensive plan have not yet been implemented in its zoning law, as well as implementing new recommendations identified in the draft amended comprehensive plan of 2023. And also, whereas the Board of Trustees is considering introductory local laws...
Mr. Mayor, add 2, 4, 5, 6, 10, and go on. What? We already... Okay, never mind.
Okay. Okay. Whereas the Board, yeah, so it's just 10, 11, 12, 13.
Okay.
Whereas the Board of Trustees is considering the introductory local laws 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 of 2023, amending a zoning law in accordance with the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to scroll over something, something's not comfortable for me here. We just redid four, five, and six tonight.
You just reintroduced. I think they need to be added to this.
I do. Yeah, yeah, so, and two?
Two is not, two is a resolution. Your plan is a plan, and you reintroduce this to a resolution.
Let's take a minute here.
Yeah, let me just look. All right, so, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's right. Introductory local law four, five, and six.
Okay. So introductory local law four, five, six, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 of 2023, amending a zoning law in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and whereas the Board of Trustees is the only agency authorized to modify its comprehensive plan and zoning law. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby declares itself lead agency as required by the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SECP, pursuant to SECP Regulation 6, NYCRR Part 617, for the purpose of amending its comprehensive plan and adopting local laws to implement its recommendations. Name of the action is amending the Village of Monroe Comprehensive Plan and Local Laws, implementing its recommendations. It's village-wide, the project is amending the comprehensive plan and adopting the local laws to implement the recommendations therein. Its action is type 1. Documents are available at Village Hall for reviewing. I need a motion to establish and adopt this resolution.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second that.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Next order of business, the authorization to sign with Robinson &amp; Cole. Resolved, the Board of Trustees authorize Mayor Dwyer to sign an engagement letter with Robinson &amp; Cole of 1055 Washington Boulevard, Stanford, Connecticut, 069012249, for the purpose of reviewing the village's updated comprehensive plan and certain proposed local laws for compliance with Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act. On a motion, I need a motion to authorize the adoption or the authorization to sign with this firm.
It's a ratification.
Ratification.
Barringer will make the motion.
Farraro, second.
Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Okay. I don't have anything myself. Yeah, I'm not gonna bring up that community barbecue Saturday. Yeah, please. I'm not gonna be in town, so if you wanna bring it up. Yeah, okay, yeah. So I did have one thing, real quick. So this Saturday, August 19th, is our Community Day, which is a barbecue in the village. It's a, it's a, an event that's community-minded. We ask anybody that's interested to come on down and participate. We're gonna have a barbecue, we're gonna have some bouncy castles, we're gonna have a concert, beginning at 4:00, ending at 9:00. So it'll be a lot of fun, the Girl Scouts will be down there, I believe the Monroe Free Library will be attending. Anyone else I'm not including?
I know it was in our email. I know we just...
So it's gonna be a great day, it's gonna be nice weather, and it'll be a lot of fun. So anybody, come on down, enjoy this, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
And local to Monroe bands, the Tone Benders and Mimicking Mars.
Yes.
So nice variety of music.
Absolutely, come on down. Hamburgers, hot dogs, saussettes, peppers. St. Paul's, that's right, St. Paul's, they're doing tattoos, right.
Who's doing the food? Who you got doing?
Towne's for Troops.
Was that?
Towne's for Troops.